Okay, we have one last item on the agenda tonight for the discussion and that there is the budget amendments and we've got Ms. Clutz at the podium and so whenever you get ready, we're ready.
Okay, so we'll start with our state budget amendment and I'll just draw your attention to some items on each amendment. With the state, I'd draw your attention to the fuel adjustment that we've received from the state. And overall throughout the year, we've received over $300,000 in adjustments. So the state gives us an allocation based on a certain dollar amount per gallon and then through the school year, they allocate additional fuel if the budget at the state level allows that. And so this year, we were lucky and we very much appreciate the additional allocation because that's something we have to absorb locally if we do not get those funds. So that's, we have some small reclasses on and then some additional funds for group home funding which are exceptional children's program. And if you have questions on that, I'll take those. Yes?
On the fuel, do we have to pay the fuel taxes that everybody else pays at the pump?
We do.
So 306 a gallon does not cover our full cost?
Absolutely not. It's close, we're over 300,000 closer than we were. We're at a couple million, but every little bit helps. And we do get discounted rates on state contract.
Mr. Harrison, do you have comments?
That is certainly not enough.
How much in the red are we at this point of the year? I mean, by summer, is there another allotment that helps us balance out? I guess what I'm saying is that this seems like we are behind where we should be in what our encumbrances and commitments either are or very likely will be for the school year. But does the state historically allocate additional monies in the summer to help us catch up? Or do we perpetually stay in the red?
Yes, we do.
Good answer.
But this is not the first year that this has happened. The fuel adjustment or the fuel allocation is always less than what fuel cost us, so we have appropriated local dollars to take care of that shortfall. So we're not truly short or in the hole. We're using, the state is not supporting fully the fuel price that we have.
And do we add to that local dollars or are those general fund dollars? I guess how do we make up the shortfall?
Through the county appropriation.
So the county covers, what, 10, 15%?
Part of the transportation budget. I believe, and I'm just pulling numbers out off the top of my head right now, I believe our state transportation allotments approximately 10 million, our local transportation allotments over $2 million. So you're looking at 20%.
So 12 million dollars and the county pays?
About 2 million. We have to supplement our transportation budget about two, a little over two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Walter? Mr. Kiger?
I just wanted to know, you said we get our fuel at a discounted rate even though, so do we buy it through a state contract or do we do local contracts? How do we purchase fuel?
Both. We bid it out currently and we get the best bid price. It is on state contract at a bid price, but you can also sometimes bid it locally and get a better bid than what's on state contract. So we do both. Lately, we've been bidding locally and taking the lowest bid although in the past, we did state contract.
So are you finding a little bit of a savings locally then?
We are.
That's good. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Ms. Clutz, you want to continue on with the local budget?
Yes. Okay, so on to our local budget amendments. We have a couple of projects, facilities projects and grounds projects that once the projects were complete, we were able to move that money into another project and do more work. The first one is for Harris Road and the third one is for Royal Oaks, trying to provide security measures there. And then the middle one is the initiative for the branding initiative.
Ms. Clutz, can you elaborate just a little bit on the contracted services there, the 70,000?
You know, I'm not sure that I'm, maybe Ms. Boone will come up and talk about the branding initiative for that.
The services that are listed there are to pay for the implementation of the items associated with our clear choice branding campaign that I have shared with you. We've sort of started rolling that out with our schools before the spring break in terms of asking them to use their school marquees as a way to advertise our school system and promote a little bit more about what our schools offer and are about. The funding that's here in this budget amendment would cover continuing to implement that plan to another level that requires, quite frankly, requires money to do that and not just the resources that we have available to us.
Board members, do you have any questions in reference to local budget?
I just have one question to Ronnie on that. Are you looking at other types of media attention? Is that what you're trying to do with this advertising program?
Yes, sir. One of the things that's in the discussion for implementing would be a billboard campaign. The other is creating a multimedia, sort of an online presence for our website that would include video and some other mediums.
I just want to say, I really am excited that we're exploring these because, you know, I think we have a lot of good products. I hate to use the word products, but we do. Our system is really putting out some really neat opportunities for our children and I'm glad we're advertising and using other ways of doing it. If we're going to compete with competitive sources like charter schools and private schools, we need to be on the same playing field and we're trying to up our game and I think this is really exciting that you're doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Walter?
Are we allowed to put this message on our school buses as well?
That's a policy question that I'm not sure I know the answer to. Do you, Colleen?
I don't think we're allowed to. Well, let me take that back. We would have, let us check. Let us check.
And I agree with Mr. Shoemaker. The time has come. You know, we haven't in the times past had to do anything to market Cabarrus County schools simply because we know that Cabarrus County schools are the clear choice. We already know that, but there's lots of people out there that are having more choices now and we'd like to help them know that Cabarrus County schools is still the clear choice for educating their children. And this is a small amount of money to pay for what we're going to get, I think. And so, you know, that's just my two cents. Are there any other discussion on this, Mr. Shoemaker?
Just another comment. About this time of year is when we begin to find out results about our high schools and, you know, like last year, we had some US, USA Today, what was it? Newsweek and US News and World Report.
The rankings for high schools.
The ranking type thing. So those would be great if, you know, we can time some of our messages according to some of those releases.
Absolutely, and I will continue to look for those types of nuggets to include in any kind of advertising that we are able to do.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boone and Ms. Clutz. Thank you both. Board members, are we okay with the local portion here? Mr. Harrison, you have a comment?
Just a comment or two more. And I mean this certainly about this campaign, but I certainly mean it across the rest of the cabinet and every facet of Cabarrus County schools. Compete, 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 compete. Please show the public what we can do that them other guys can't do. And I would just, not to set the tone of the advertising campaign, when it's finally presented to us, I'd love to see a very detailed presentation about that. A very powerful ad that I really recall seeing was of a certain religious denomination which basically said, "Come back. Come back to this denomination." And it was a national program that attempted to speak to people saying, "You've drifted away from this denomination. We welcome you back." Consider that tone as we go forward. Thank you, Ms. Boone.
Okay, Ms. Clutz, we can move on now with the other one here. Yes?
So we have a small budget adjustment for federal funds where we've increased the amount of, again, an EC allocation, but it's targeted for certain children. And then the, you have a question?
So we have not seen any cutbacks due to the budget sequestration on our federal funding yet?
Not this fiscal year. We're anticipating next fiscal year to have some cutbacks, but this current year is protected.
Great.
Okay. So the next budget amendments for capital projects, we want to allocate additional revenue that we've received for 136,000 for particular capital projects that we have.
And this money, I believe, Dr. Shepherd, you and I talked, I think this was from the escrow account from FER, is that correct? That's where this money's coming from?
It is.
It's not new money? Well, it's old money that we're getting back.
Right.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Board members, do we have any questions on this item? Okay, Mr. Phillips.
Are we, in this, are we voting on how we're going to spend this? Or are we just saying, well, we're going to put it into an account for capital and then decide later how to spend it?
So these would be allocated to that function, in the 6500 function. So we would not anticipate bringing anything back to the board to change the function level.
Okay. But how's, what's the money going to be spent on then?
We have a GPS project that we've worked with the Transportation Department on over the last at least a year. And so we anticipated an ROI within a one fiscal current year, one current fiscal year. We're thinking we were going to generate savings, be able to purchase the equipment and generate more savings. That did not work out. The Transportation Department decided they wanted a different particular type of GPS system which costs more. The return on investment is still excellent, but it's going to take longer to return. So we did not have the dollars to purchase the equipment. So this would allow us to jumpstart that program, create the savings within the Transportation Department, hopefully get some of that $2 million back that we just discussed that's local dollars and be able to reinvest that in other areas. And then there's a project where we want to reinvest and repurpose the gym floor at Northwest High School into another school.
Okay. Well, I think that we need, this on the action agenda, because I think we need to discuss both things. First of all, if the transportation project doesn't pay for itself in a year, then we need to compare it to these other things that we put in our budget from last year. For instance, I mean, for next year. For instance, we've got an item in there for transportation. We want $100,000 for security cameras for yellow buses. Well, maybe we should be using this money to do that because it was rated number two in our priority list for capital for next year. You know, and then for the item for the repurposing of the gym floor, you know, it's, again, I think it needs to, we need to say, well, do we want to do that or do we want to do some of these things that we, you know, we have a list here that says, "Install fire doors on 3rd and 5th grade hallways at one of the elementary schools for life, safety, health for $25,000." Maybe rather than doing that in next year's budget, we ought to use this money that we suddenly have come into right now. Because it seems to me that we are never going to crawl out of this hole that we're into on capital spending if every time we have some unexpected money that comes in, we say, "Oh, let's just go spend it on something nice" rather than these must-have things.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, do you have any comments?
I'd like to echo Mr. Phillips's sentiment there because we should always be reverting back to the plan. Stick with the plan. Whatever the plan's priorities were should be what we look to first and foremost to help guide our decisions with these types of funds. And that's what this board can take to the public and justify as well as to county leaders. We need to be focused on that plan that we've vetted and that we've worked in exhaustive detail about to be able to then say that these funds have been spent according to what we determined would be the right approaches to those extra funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
I think it's been covered.
Okay, Mr. Kiger?
Is this an all or nothing deal or can we separate out the capital from the other amendments?
We can. We can separate them out.
Because I'm okay with everything above what we talked about, but the one below, we have a board member wants it on the action and I think it's appropriate that we put that one amendment on the action.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Mr. Shoemaker, you have your comments, questions?
I don't necessarily see a problem with this piece. If we want to talk about the spending of the money of the 136,000 that we have here, we can make that a completely separate item because this is not approving any project. It's just going back into the capital budget and that's all you're trying to do. Now, the project that you did talk about was the AVLS project, which was the project that Transportation had proposed in the previous budget cycle. And that had an ROI of one year. They ran into some very big technical hurdles with that project with cell phones being able to communicate successfully throughout the county. I believe that was the reason it got delayed. And Dr. Sane, if you want to come talk a little bit so these guys have a little bit of better grounding as to what happened with that. Because I've been watching this even during the election, it was, when are we going to get this project? Because they're always really excited about this one-year return and it's going to save a tremendous amount of money in how our bus drivers are maintaining their time and then what they're capable, what the Transportation Department's capable of doing. Dr. Sane, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, there were actually two functions that the AVL was, is supposed to do for us. One is that bus drivers will be able to sign in when they turn on their bus and they will be given an allotment of time to cover pre-inspection and post-inspection. Right now, bus drivers can have to walk to the school, get into the school, sign into Timekeeper. They can go back and start the bus warming up. They can sit there and drink a Coke or whatever. And we have no way of knowing that time is being used appropriately. What we do know is that we need to get a better handle on bus driver time. And we spent, Kelly can help me if I'm wrong, but we spent bus driver overtime that probably can be handled by more adequately monitoring and supervising the use of their time. So that's one thing. The other thing is that bus drivers lose time when they go off route. They go off route and there's no way with our current system to be able to know when a bus driver has gone off route. We have to trust that the bus driver is following the approved route, the one that's been drawn by Transportation and not taking a shortcut. What we do find is that we have bus drivers who, because they're not being, because there's no way to monitor it, there's no way to supervise it. They make stops when they're not supposed to make stops. That increases their time. They sometimes forget to go to a stop. They, they're human. I mean, they just, it's a situation where they're not monitored and so there are some folks who do take advantage of it. The AVL system, the Automatic Vehicle Loadator System, which allows us to track a bus's route, be able to locate that bus at any given time. And when we have the numerous calls that we do that say, "Oh, the bus didn't stop today," we can go back and say, "Yes, ma'am, the bus did stop at 7:22 at such and such a place like we said we were going to stop." So it's a matter of ability to supervise, keep reducing route time and reducing excess driver time that we have no way to track it.
That covered.
You okay, Mr. Shoemaker?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The reason I wanted her to explain that to you is because this happened in the previous budget cycle. So now we have a carryover. That was a high priority from a previous budget cycle. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that, yes, we're trying to manage the plan and that was why I wanted to bring this to your attention, that we are trying to manage the plan, but if you don't know about it, you can't even ask about it. And that's why I really wanted you guys to hear that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. And I remember us discussing the AVLS because I was part of the Budget Committee when we talked about that. And it was supposed to be a gigantic savings with the one-year ROI, which obviously it didn't happen and that type thing. But, you know, what I would like for us to do, and this is just, you know, a thought, you know, this, I'm just one, there's six more of me. I like this broke down, Ms. Clutz. I would like it broke down, what the GPS is, how much we're allocating for the GPS and how much we're allocating for the other capital project that we've talked about, the repurposing of the gym floor. And, you know, I think we need some more data on that as well as far as, you know, what it would take to do new versus reusing or repurposing what we already have. And Dr. Shepherd, you and I talked about the mirrors, you know, at the Glenn Center and, you know, get to a better figure on what, you know, the subject matter on this project here. And since this money is being derived from the FER construction project, that we might want to look and see if there's any type little capital projects that need to be done there at FER. Some of this money can be used for those little projects that are on a list that need to be taken care of and designate some of the money that way. Now, that's just my thoughts and whatever the board thinks, but if the money's coming from the construction of the FER, then we need to look at that also. But the GPS projects, I have no problem with that. That should have been done a long time ago, but the funds didn't come in, so therefore we couldn't do it. But this other thing here is like some of the other board members have said, this is something that we want to do, something that we'd like to do, and it's a great idea. There's no doubt about that. But with all the needs that we have in the system, I think we should start at FER with some of this money and go with that. But based on what I've heard, this particular portion here on the capital funds outlay, we'll have to go to the action agenda on the 13th and you can get us some more data. But please do break it out though, and if you will.
May I ask that you consider the recommendation that Mr. Shoemaker made in that you go ahead and move the money to capital projects and then we'll bring back recommendations to you on how this money is to be spent? I think that's a cleaner way of doing this. The money would have to be moved, then you can decide how it's spent at that point. Okay?
I have no problem with that. I have no problem. Is that okay with the board to do it that way? And I have no problem with it at all. I just want to make sure that we know where this money's going. It just don't get thrown into an account, "Oh, well, we got 136,000 now and we can buy GPSs and we can do this, we can do that." And I just want to make sure that the board knows where we're at with the spending of this money.
And that's why it's before you today. We'll take our direction from the board.
Mr. Shu?
Yes.
I guess we're all saying something like the same thing, but I would just like a very good reassurance that previous commitments that we've made and previous plans that we had that we couldn't, for whatever reason, fulfill or honor in previous years, as you say, Mr. Shoemaker, that are carried over into the current budget, that we are keeping track of those previous lists that we were hoping to do in previous years. I guess what I'm saying is, we had a current budgetary planning process. Did it take into consideration previous budget planning desires that could not be fulfilled? I guess what I'm saying is, I would feel better about a budget process that carried over items that we couldn't get in previous years and brought them current to the budget plan that we have right now. Am I getting that across? It seems like previous plans had these desires in them, then we come up and we have a new plan. The new plan ought to include old plans that we could not fulfill.
So we do. That's normal.
That's fine. That's the reassurance I'm looking for.
That's normal practice for us to continue and bring forward items. This one did not come forward to you because there was a plan to have it funded and it should not have been a budgetary impact or issue. So things changed from the time that you made your decision, or not this particular board, the other board made the decision. We went through a budget cycle. It was not entered into the budget cycle because there was a plan. It was not a requested item this fiscal year because there was a plan. The plan changed. We do bring forward items from year to year and review those in Budget Committee.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, you have one last and of course, this will go on to the consent.
I do. So the good news is that we conservatively budget our Kids Plus program, our enterprise funds, so to make sure that we're going to capture the revenue that we expected. So as we review our budget this fiscal year toward the end of the year, we did generate $50,000 or we're anticipating generating $50,000 more dollars than we had budgeted. And so you budget the revenue and you can also budget the expenses that are associated with those. So that's good news.
Any questions? Mr. Walter?
Is this for summer programs?
No, no, no. It's for the entire program.
The entire program?
All fiscal year.
So you're adding like the $25,000 to field trips that they've already taken? We're reimbursing ourselves or?
They literally cut field trips down to the bone. There was, they almost eliminated every field trip that the Kids Plus program was able to have because we had to pay for salaries.
Okay, so they have a month to do field trips is what you're saying with this money?
They will. They'll do a lot of those. They'll prepay their carolyn's tickets and all of that comes due in May-June in preparation for the summer. And that's it. That's a significant expense if she plans to continue to do that. But those type things all have to be paid, May-June.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other comments?
Okay, Ms. Clutz, we'll go to consent agenda for these items on the budget and then you bring us back the other things whenever the time comes. We won't forget. Thank you. You've got one more item now.
I think I do.
Okay, we've got one more item, board members. This is an action item. We'll need to vote on this particular item this tonight. It's the approval of bids for music equipment and Ms. Clutz is here, she's going to tell us about that.
Okay. So we have, we requested bids for music equipment and it was broken up into a bass bid and alternates, primarily because every vendor could not get every instrument that we needed. So we had to break it down with, between bids and then alternates. And so what we're presenting today is a recommendation to take the bass bid at the lowest responsible bidder would be music and arts. The bass bid's 127,919. And then we would select the alternates based on the lowest bid of each alternate.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions?
Let me ask this one real quick, sort of help set the stage. This is already appropriated money from the fund balance, is right?
It is.
And the amount that we appropriated, is it sufficient to cover what we're wanting to do?
There's, when you take all of the alternates, we're over $8,000. So we're going to have to eliminate an alternate or we're going to have to, we're not going to have to, or adjust the quantities in an alternate, but we're, when you add sales tax to it and we have to pay sales tax, we're at $408,000.
But will we get the sales tax back through the county?
Portion of it. We'll get the local portion. We do not get the state portion back.
Okay, so whatever we get back, wherever we took it from, we'll put that back in. Is that right?
We actually budget sales tax refund in our normal budget process. So no, it doesn't go directly back to that particular item.
It goes to the general fund.
Goes to the general fund.
In other words, you get it back.
Well, I budgeted other places, yeah. Yeah.
She's got the best of both worlds. She gives it out and then gets it back in too, you know? Okay. Board members, you got any questions? Mr. Phillips, I think you raised your hand.
I think so.
Okay. Because I just wanted to ask that for clarification, so, okay. Mr. Harrison, do you have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Phillips. So does item number one equal all the violins that we're trying to buy and does item number two equal the oboes that we're trying to buy?
They were specific in category and oftentimes manufacturer because it made sense to those people that understand music and equipment to do it that way.
Which I did not.
And I did not either.
And so when we purchase these instruments, how will they be distributed? Where will they be housed? Where will this concentration of these instruments be allocated?
This will be for all of our middle schools and all of our traditional middle schools and high schools. and high schools.
Per their needs.
Exactly.
Per their needs, if they need particular instruments. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Have you already answered my questions? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kiger, Mr. Schumaker?
What was the total budget for this?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, only question I had, Ms. Klutz, was any of these vendors, local vendors, that we get, is this Music and Arts? Are they the local, obviously they're the lowest, but...
Music and Arts is not the local vendor. They are the lowest responsible bidder of the bass bid. Music and More is a local vendor, but the lowest vendor is Music and Arts.
Okay, well, I always like to see us give as much business as we can to the local vendors and maybe when we start buying the alternates, some of them will fall out there. I looked at them and there's some vast differences between some of them and some, you know, obviously are much higher. I see one difference, ten thousand dollars difference for the same amount of equipment. And, but anyway, you know, that's something that you guys have to take care of.
We will be awarding some to the local vendor, some of the alternates.
Well, I hope that we will be able to do that, you know, to support our local people. All right, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion that we approve the music equipment purchase?
So moved.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schumaker seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six oh. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Okay, board members and viewing audience, it's time now for us to convene in closed session. And so in this closed session here tonight is pursuant to General Statute 143.31811A6 and also General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. And so do I have a motion that we adjourn into the closed session?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With that being said, good night to our viewing audience and we'll see you back on May the thirteenth for our business session. Good night.